Tuesday, April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Commissioner's courtroom, one sixty-two West First Street, Trinity County Fourth Avenue, Groveton, Texas. Mike Thornton, Texas. Prayer.
We pray to this morning. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for another day that we have to serve you. God, we ask you to bless us in this meeting today that we conduct the affairs of our county to the our utmost ability and integrity, God, what is best for the citizens of Trinity County. We ask you to bless our state and our nation. We thank you for every blessing that's been stowed upon us. God, we give you praise and honor and glory for everything that we have and what we ask these things, we do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Number four, approval minutes, April eighth.
I read through, Judge, I don't find any discrepancies of anybody else's having so little as adoption.
Second. Page number five, discussing act of proclamation, April fair housing month. And it says, whereas Title Eight of Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, prohibits disformation in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within the constitutional limits the fair housing of the United States. And whereas the principle of a fair housing is not only a national law, but a and a national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitled for all Americans. And whereas the national, national fair housing law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now therefore, we, the Commissioner's Court of Trinity County, do proclaim April its fair housing month in the county of Trinity and do and do hereby urge all citizens of the locality to become aware and support the fair housing law. Second. Six, discussing approval of personal action form. Board, Rebecca, open up. Bonnie?
Yes.
Board, speaking. Rebecca, Rebecca.
Bonnie's meeting outside auditor.
I. I beg your most, you approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discussing act on official one. Act one on Phoenix Avenue, I make my own approval. Second. All in favor? All right, received monthly payroll reports. Why can't these? Wouldn't do any good, Doug, saw his people mouth shut. Number nine, discussing act approval, receipt, filing, listing on the specific activity report, Trinity County.
I did see where they got Tommy's amount of fee. That's a good thing we got. I'm done with that name. Took a while to find. Yes, sir. Got that, thank you, sir.
So, so. All in favor?
What? Give me a second.
I'll circle. All in favor?
Aye.
Or, due this week, Rebecca had surgery, she's doing good. That's right. Bonnie's tied up in the oven. Is that Lacy?
Yes, sir. Yes, she is leading up to the outside auditor, so get me today.
Number ten, discussing act on approval of monthly financial reports.
Yes, so we are hitting our halfway mark for fiscal year twenty-five. As far as the tax collection through March, we're at eighty-six percent. The general fund, our revenue's sitting seventy-eight. Our expenses are forty-two percent, which is below the fifty that we're trying to keep it at. Special funds, our revenue's at sixty-seven and expenses are right at fifty. This time, we ran the road and bridge financial reports separately, so it won't be so hard to find your section. So, both are there, and then the job totals and the special funds are there.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Lacy, are you doing the national force payments and one of the comes in like from the federal timber stuff that we got? We just got notice that we got that we're gonna be cut pretty heavy off all across these counties in East Texas. Pretty significant. I just didn't know how much we was in for last year, but I believe, I'm looking at my report section of this, and which is which is page one of thirteen, I guess, to start our section. It says federal U.S. timber receipts, so I got twenty-nine thousand, that's, I guess that's what we're budgeting for. But we're only gonna get seventy-one hundred for the whole county, which schools.
That's the county, our schools.
Yeah, schools hit fifty, some of that, so we'll break down thirty-five. We normally hit three hundred and nine thousand, or that's our normal payment, three hundred and nine thousand, and cut down to seven thousand. And it, all over these, I think it's eleven or ten or eleven counties in East Texas in this district, there used to be normal payment, two point one million, and the total is only gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand, all over these ten or eleven counties.
I can get this Bonnie and see if she's heard anything on that, or?
It's just something we need to look at for, if this is even doing normal, we need to look at figuring out, we're gonna have to just not budget for it. We probably won't have to budget for it at all, because it's surprise, you know, it's gonna, if they surprise us, it's just here in the middle of our budget here.
Exactly.
So we may just need to leave that out and not think we're gonna get it, and maybe just be, hey, less than if we do it.
Right, exactly. We will look into that.
Yeah, that's gonna be significant here.
It is.
I mean, just on mine, twenty-nine thousand dollars, and you look at split in thirty-five hundred four ways to the road bridge, I mean, you look at twenty-eight thousand dollars just for me.
Yeah.
They hit all of these six.
Yes, sir, I see what they got all of everybody.
Yeah, they were good, I talked to what is?
Three, thirteen counties, all over this district, thirteen counties.
So.
I don't know if you, if you wanna, you wanna take a look.
I don't know that.
Yeah, just take that and deal with her, and just, we just need to look at our future and look on budget time.
Lacy, you said we were about forty-something percent on our budget for the years before expenditures.
Uh, general funds at about forty-two percent.
Forty-two.
Yes, sir.
Was it? Shows that our overall percentage is present right now at fifty percent, that's with payroll.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just, overall, forty-two, kind of standard of figures, but.
Make a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
One thing, Lacy.
Yes, sir.
On the community service, I guess that would be our inmate. I'm gonna play the page, looking at precinct three. But my point is that the lunches that we buy from usually put, you got four thousand in there, but they haven't been charged, no doubt. Any of them, so I don't know where they're taking it from.
Okay.
Are y'all getting a receipt for it?
Oh, yeah, we turn in a receipt.
Oh, we turn in a receipt. So I mean, it's coming out of, y'all paying for it? No, we're charging it and the county's paying it. It's coming out of our budget, but it's not coming out of that line item.
So it's coming out of community service?
Yeah.
It's mostly coming out of community service. It does not.
But nothing's coming out.
It used to be in our budgets under inmates labor, inmate meals or inmate labor, when we was using county inmates, but since we can't use county inmates, we just put it under community service and I T B C inmates.
And a lot of the, the names have changed when we converted over, some of the accounts, the names changed a little, but if there's nothing coming out, it needs to be, we'll have to see where that has been charged to, you know.
Well, the money's coming out, it did pay, because our vendors were being paid.
Right.
But it's not showing up on our budget.
Okay. You'll have to see where it's been charged to, yeah. Misslandian, something, we can check on it, though.
There shouldn't be no Misslandian. It shouldn't be.
Maybe coming out of your book.
It probably is, that's what we know already. Number eleven, discussing act approval of disaster related. One.
Uh, this one will be from fourth through April eighteenth, and we've paid out fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-one cents, and then the second page shows where those funds.
Lacy, let me ask you a question. This is, uh, majority of time is for broken material and fuel, lift and stuff like that. Here recently, I've been using a lot, I think some other commissioners have too, been using a lot of contract labor. Me personally, I go with, when we got contract, Jason nails. Would that be beneficial to us, the use of receipts from hauling as well, to put all this, to put all this disaster receipt? Because that's why we're hauling the rockets for, from all the people, money that we're getting in and, you know what I mean?
And it could be, that's just, I mean, I'm not sure of the.
It'd be contract hauling. May just write that down and look at it, contract hauling, but I haven't seen no receipts on contract hauling that's on the disaster.
Right, yeah, I've only ever seen.
He hauls for you, he turns receipts in upstairs.
Yeah, he and Nelson dinner, I think he knows him good, because we're making. Does he get? Turn over the, I mean, the brown. Hey, Brandy, does Naomi see this, the papers to you?
Yeah, and I turn in them stairs.
Well.
What I'm getting at is, y'all getting what I'm saying, it shouldn't be, shouldn't that, that's.
Well, that's bringing them up.
It's the hauling of the road materials.
This would just justify, I mean, if I'm correct, these receipts are just basically justifying to be what that, that we're getting that we're buying for that. Also, the hauling of it would be.
Yes, I would, I would think that possibly could be considered in that, but I would have to double check.
Yeah, may just check.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not hauling it for you. The only thing I'm, I'm gonna add to that is Brandy.
Yes, sir.
When them tickets come in, he turns them into you, it should be verified by the commissioner, just turning them in upstairs and paying them. I want, I haven't verified it, I hadn't ever hauled any, go here lately. Myself, I won't, me and Mike are, are having ours hauled in, but I, I proved how many loads and Mike does too, but I won't make sure that that's what's turned in upstairs.
That's where they match it up.
Yes.
I make motion to approve this, I say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twelve, receiving county auditor, second quarter reports, March thirty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
This is just showing our second quarter report, the reconciliation of all the different things. We did get cash counts completed for the end of March of all the offices, so those are completed for the year. There were no significant exceptions now.
I might point something out, too, on that last page about our grant administration. There are sixteen active grants in process right now, and monitor six, oh, that's getting after those grants. I'm very proud of Vicki and Bonnie and all of what y'all doing, that, that's amazing.
They are working very hard.
Thank y'all very much for that. Just wanted to make that an observation, y'all, thank you for being important to the community.
Third thing, discussing act approval on budget amendments.
Um, this is a budget amendment for. Yes, sir. And so we're taking a part-time position and making it full-time. The amendment is gonna be based on the six months remaining in the fiscal year, so we're just having to budget the twenty thousand one ninety-five. So you can see there that Bonnie's got that moved for him, so that we can pay him the rest of the full-time salary for the next six months.
Like, like to approve.
My second.
Second. Aye. Test our second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More thing, receiving, so another recourse to Trinity County Sheriff's Department. Number fifteen, discussing act approval of reports on monthly, on the month of March two thousand twenty-five, Justice. Uh, we got Mrs. Nancy Seinfeld, eighty-nine thousand, six, six, nine, two, six. Eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen, nine, twenty-six. JP one, y'all was waiting on a check or something, which I was trying to get.
Sir.
For our report on JP one.
Oh, yes, sir. We got it.
And what, and what didn't y'all have, we didn't get a report on that.
Oh, it was, there was just a two dollar difference, so we just had to get it or we got a check.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's why we didn't have it before. It was still still coming, and they didn't get it fixed.
Okay.
That was wrong. On the last steps. Precinct two, six thousand, four twenty-seven, ninety. Six thousand, four twenty-seven, ninety. Judge Keith Johnson, precinct three, six thousand, six fifty-two, sixty-five. Six thousand, six fifty-two, sixty-five. Judge Steptoe, Justin, Justin Pease precinct four, four thousand, five ninety-two, seventy-nine. Four thousand, five ninety-two, seventy-nine. District clerk, even Steptoe, ten thousand, two oh seven, even. Ten thousand, two oh seven, even. Ms. Shasta, twenty-four thousand, oh, sixty-eight. Twenty-four thousand, sixty-eight dollars, even. Trinity County Sheriff's Department, twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Twelve thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. County Attorney's Office, hot checks is one thousand, six seventy-three, forty-six. One thousand, six seventy-three, forty-six. Pre-trial diversions is thirty thousand, seven sixty-four, eighty-four. Thirty thousand, seven sixty-four, eighty-four.
How do we work in private subdivision? Well, well, that property been took, took over by the private district. And that's the only subdivision we ever cut trees in, but we've always done it in Mike's precinct, so maybe you can hear it more about it. They get special attention, I guess.
Well, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do know.
Watch out, hush. I inherited that, thank you so much.
Sometimes that does happen, though.
Yeah.
Sometimes things do happen.
All in favor? I don't know if y'all heard, but our hospital's closing down. We really needed it to stay open in our camp.
Yes, sad deal.
I called, uh, yesterday afternoon when I heard this, and I did call people down, and they were having a federal meeting at four-thirty yesterday afternoon about that. Don't know what happened, but they were having that, it was on their, on their plate yesterday.
I think that the emergency room, they're gonna keep the emergency room open at this time, have you heard that, Keith?
Well, I understand, everything's shut down Friday, seven o'clock.
Everything? Okay.
Well, now health point, I believe is gonna take up the clinic.
When I started, when I started John, I said just the pediatric part.
Well, that's what they have now, but they're in thought to go ahead and keep it open, with the other two dollars. So hopefully that'll work out.
I see it happening, so. It's.
It's sixteen, so. We have broken sixteen.
Discussing act on removal of trees, and it's located on Hawkenburg Lane, Westwood Shore. Begging motion, approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, what is it, because they're in danger, there's some danger.
Of a house or something, just wanted to hear some of these tax properties are taken over, they're about to fall on another house and stuff like that, so that's what he does. Hush.
You know, we have the office, leave it alone.
My neighbors fell on one of them. Nobody else, like, walking up there and so they didn't.
Make a motion, we approve the monthly reports.
Second, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're done, I make a motion, we adjourn.